So.
Okay, folks, it is six o'clock. We are in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. Today is Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. And I am calling to order the regular meeting of the common council. Colette will start with roll call.
Lynn Parrott?
I knew I was gonna be first. Yeah, I knew it. Wishy, I'm here.
Tony McFall?
Here.
Barbara Dos?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Ken Killian is absent, excused. Kathy Cop?
Here.
Stephen Badger?
Here, but I haven't been sworn in yet, so.
So that's, that's our first order of business then tonight is the administration of the oath of office. And I, and subsequently, we'll talk about the committees that you will assume. So Colette, I believe you're gonna come forward and Steve, I think you go over to the podium for this.
Spicious occasion?
Yeah. Just repeat after me.
Okay.
Stephen Badger?
Hi, Stephen Badger.
Been elected to the office.
Having been elected to the office.
Of Alderperson at large.
Of Alderperson at large.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially. Charge the duties of set office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Yeah.
Fine, let me get this to you. There we go. Good. And as far as appointments, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna read these as you come and then I'm gonna give you the paper. So Tom, we, we basically decide at the beginning of April what committees we want. And Tom had, Tom Knoll, whose position was vacant, was serving on the Community Safe Routes Committee, the Museum Board, and the Water and Sewer Commission. And so I'll hand those to you. And if you find that the Water and Sewer Commission meets at four o'clock on the second Wednesday of the month, the Museum Board meets on the third.
Wednesday.
The third Wednesday. And I don't know about Safe Routes.
Third Monday.
Third Monday, third Monday, third Wednesday, and second Wednesday. Well, there. So if you have, if you have conflicts, let us know because it's possible that somebody would, you know, change. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. The following may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Council minutes from September fourth, the special meeting, September ninth, the special meeting, and September ninth, the regular meeting. We have payment of bills, and I know there were some questions, but I think those have been cleared. Appointments to boards and commissions, and tonight I'm appointing Matt Niehaus to this plan commission. Licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as are in your packet. Permits, there's a street closing permit for Main Street from Chestnut to Water and Bonson from Maine to Irving Place on Saturday, October twenty-fifth. This is the, from ten fifteen, ten forty-five in the morning to one fifteen in the afternoon. This is the annual Sweet Treats on Main, primarily sponsored by the Main Street Program, but certainly participated in by many. And then we have Resolution twenty-five dash twelve proclaiming October as United Nations Month. Do I hear any?
Some agenda as presented. Back in it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Colette will vote. Parrott?
Yes.
McFall?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Badger?
Can I approve all but one? Opponent? I didn't have it.
Then you just say no. Motion carries. All right, citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Again, we'll limit comments to no more than five minutes. There is no one here for that, although we do know that this weekend, probably Friday, would be the Platteville High School homecoming parade in the afternoon. What time, Lynn?
Yeah. The one, I know.
I don't know, I always just say sometime afternoon, two o'clock. I don't know exactly when. And that would be the Platteville High School Homecoming Parade. Everyone should really know that the UW-Platteville Homecoming is then the following week. So that parade is on October fourth, Saturday, at ten in the morning. So, and then that night would, of course, be the traditional lighting of the M. So just so that you're aware of those things. Anybody else with anything? Okay, then let's go on to the reports in your packet. There were several reports. The first was the Community Safe Routes Committee. Howard, do you wanna, is there anything in there you want to particularly point out since Tom had been?
No, nothing to add, thank you.
Okay. Airport Commission? Tony?
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer Commission? I have nothing to add. And Parks, Recreation, and Forestry, or Parks, Forestry, and Recreation, Bob?
Nothing to add here.
Well, you do have something going on, though.
They have started the demolition of the pool. And it's, they have gotten a lot done in two days.
I guess with a big machine like that, it doesn't take long. It's not like a bunch of little hammers, so.
I had a question for you. A serious, a serious question, maybe silly, but someone asked, are we selling that goldfish? That big goldfish that was?
Oh, that fish slide.
The fish.
Not yet. Okay.
And a lot of that depends, I mean, what we do with that depends on how much money is raised.
Okay.
Raise enough money for a new place structure that would be in that same area in the pool.
Then we let them know through some force if we was selling it. We wouldn't just get rid of it.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't even really discussed that yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I think you would know if we were gonna get rid of it. I mean, the other big slide was sold on Wisconsin on Life Surplus, is that right, Bob? So I'm, I'm thinking we would know. I think, is that the only thing that we were able to sell?
Yeah, we salvage everything, yep.
Otherwise, everything is salvaged. So, okay. We'll move on to our action items, I think. The first is Resolution twenty-five thirteen, providing for the sale of approximately eight point two four million dollars in general obligation promissory notes. This is Series twenty-two-five A. And I have a feeling that we're waiting for Brian. Is that right? Is that who's gonna join us? Pardon?
I'm, I'm on, Kayla's here.
Oh, Kayla, I'm sorry.
Yes. Nope, that's okay. Just Brian's at another meeting tonight, so I thought I'd take on all things Platteville for the night. I believe you all have been provided the pre-sale report as part of your packet.
Yep.
Okay. I'm just gonna review that, some of this information you have reviewed before. But tonight is to set the sale for these cities, eight point two million dollar general obligation promissory note sale, Series twenty-two-five A. The primary driver of the sale is to fund the Aquatic Center, but also includes street improvements and stormwater improvements, as well as some equipment purchases. All of the debt service is going to be pledged and repaid by the city's irrevocable property tax levy. And we are issuing this pursuant to sixty-seven twelve twelve of Wisconsin statutes. As you're aware, that the statutes also limit the general obligation debt capacity of the city to five percent of the total equalized valuation. Following the issuance of these notes, we'll be at approximately fifty-seven percent of the limit, with the remaining debt capacity of twenty-one point seven million dollars. These will be deemed as bank qualified, as we are not expecting to issue more than ten million dollars in tax-exempt obligations during this year. The city is currently rated double A minus by S and P. We will seek a new rating for these notes and anticipate an affirmation of that rating. These will be sold competitively, just as the city has sold all of the notes prior to this. And we believe that is the best course of action to obtain most favorable interest rates for the city. Kind of just looking at the timeline, we are obviously reviewing the pre-sale report today. The week of October thirteenth, we will have a due diligence call with Quarles and Brady to review the official statement, as well as host a conference call with the rating agency. We will distribute the official statement to the investors on October twenty-first, and we'll sell and be back here to award the sale of the notes on October twenty-eighth. And we're estimating closing around November thirteenth, and that's really means when the city will see the funds in their bank account. To make up the eight point two million dollars, we have about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of street projects, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of equipment purchases, and then seven point one million dollars for the Aquatic Center. Cost of issuances are listed on page six, and that's kind of how we get to the eight point two four million. We've taken account slight interest earnings, and that is really just a time in which the proceeds will be invested between when they are closed and when they are spent on project costs. We have used a recent sale, double A minus sale, so a light credit rating sale, to determine the interest rate, plus a conservative thirty-five basis points or point three-five percent. So we're anticipating over the twenty-year life of the note, about three point nine million dollars in total interest costs for a total payment principal and interest of twelve point one million dollars over the life of the note. Taking a look at how this, on page eight or Table Three of the packet, how this has an effect on the property tax levy. Our goal when we structure debt is to smooth out levy increases as much as possible. Therefore, it smoothes out the tax rate. And our goal, as always, is to avoid any peaks and valleys in the property tax rate specifically rated, related to debt service. And so because of the size of this issuance, we are anticipating about a two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollar increase in the levy for debt service in twenty-six, before it drops down to ninety-seven thousand and twenty-seven thousand in twenty-six and twenty-seven. And then a lot, much of the city's existing debt obligations fall off thereafter. When we go to skid, or go to do future CIPs, we will obviously layer in the new debt for future years to kind of avoid those peaks and valleys. If there's any changes on sale day, which we would anticipate both kind of on a, receiving a premium bid, as the city has in the past, we'll use that to downsize, and then that will obviously go to lower any levy impact on the notes overall. And then just on page nine, re-stating that capacity analysis. The city has an internal policy limit of three and a half percent of equalized value, where the statutes call for five percent equalized value. So we show that to you both on the statutory and the internal debt limit, just so you have a comparison of where we are on both. Currently in two thousand and twenty-five, on the statutory debt limit, you are utilizing forty percent. This would put us to fifty-six percent of the statutory debt limit and eighty percent of the internal debt limit. There would still be a remaining capacity, even with your internal debt limit, which is half, obviously, of statutory, of seven million dollars after the issuance, obviously increasing thereafter as debt starts to fall off and residual capacity comes back online. And then page ten is just a look at kind of the snapshot of the one-year trend in current interest rates. The current BBI rate, which is kind of just our baseline rate, is about four point nine four. It has shot up in the last couple of months, but is starting to stabilizing come down. We had some sales in the last couple of weeks in the low fours to mid threes. And so while it is still variably, variably changing and really at the kind of market changes, there was a cut, the Fed did cut interest rates and have announced that they're anticipating two more cuts this year. And so what effect that will have between now and October twenty-eighth, when we send, or when we sell the notes, is unknown. But just kind of a snapshot for you all to get an understanding of where current interest rates are. I'm happy to answer any questions there may be.
Okay, questions?
Kayla, I have a question that came up today when I was talking to a council member about the debt. And I wasn't sure the answer, and since you're here, maybe it'll just save me some research. So we understand that there are call dates for debt and that debt cannot be refinanced or refunded prior to the call date. But is it possible to pay off principal early and thereby save interest?
So you can't, there is no prepayment penalty, but you can't call the total amount until those call dates, which start in, I think, May, May first, two thousand and thirty-two. So you cannot prepay or call any maturities, partial maturities, or any future maturities prior to two thousand and thirty-two. And the reason that is, is really to kind of protect the investors on the investor side. It's, it's part of securities laws to essentially give them some type of guaranteed return. But absolutely, if interest rates drop, and we monitor this two or three times a year for the city on all of its outstanding obligations, that we would definitely recommend a refinancing to say, have those interest savings.
Right, thank you. And, and we have done that before. We have refinanced.
We, we have. But the, the question specifically was that.
You could pay early.
Prepay early before the call date, and the answer is no, is my understanding.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else with questions? I have a question. Do we have the one-ton dump truck already and the two-and-a-half-ton dump truck chassis? Have we ordered them? Do we have them?
I think, yeah.
We've ordered them.
We paid the invoice for the one-ton.
Oh, the one-ton, yes.
And the two-and-a-half-ton is, is being constructed.
Okay. Just, just a question. I know there's lots, lots of lead time on those. So if there are no questions, I would take a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution twenty-five thirteen, providing for the sale of approximately eight million two hundred and forty thousand dollars of general obligation promissory notes, Series twenty-two-five A.
Okay, motion by Bob, seconded by Tony to adopt Resolution twenty-five thirteen. Colette will vote. Parrott?
Yes.
McFall? Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're on now to the information and discussion portion of the agenda. We don't take action during this point, portion, so we won't hear any motions. And the first one is revisions to Chapter eleven, which seem to be a great number.
Yes. The Wisconsin DNR has developed new rules for recycling. And one of those rules says that municipalities must amend their ordinances to comply with those new rules prior to April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. In your packet, I have included the current Chapter eleven. Those are on pages sixty-two to seventy-six in the packet. The sample ordinance that the DNR provided is attached next between pages seventy-seven and eighty-three. And then what I did was, I did a redline version of the sample ordinance to include the Platteville specific items. And those are on pages eighty-four through ninety-eight. Most of the modifications help define some requirements for commercial properties. The previous guidance was that commercial properties must have adequate recycling containers, and the new rules help define what adequate means. Usually, it's, it's what they call a two-to-one rule. We, we just don't want to have, you know, five, five apartments having a single small recycling bin and having somebody call it adequate, kind of a thing. So it puts teeth into it. So when, when this comes back for action, we will actually prepare an ordinance that will contain the non-redline version of that new ordinance. But I wanted to show you where the differences were. Farady Incorporated and the Street Department have also reviewed the changes as well. So we're recommending that that come forward for approval.
Okay, questions? So lengthy.
Yeah. Can you, you mentioned your example was apartments, but it's leaning towards commercial. Is there, you have any idea what the cost for businesses might be? How it might be affected by this?
Not really. Maybe Ed has some thoughts, but probably should.
No, you have to come.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Sorry.
Businesses in Platteville already have recycling set up. So when you're talking about the five units or apartment buildings, we consider them the same thing in our eyes. They're all commercial. So most commercial businesses already have a two-to-one ratio with a cardboard container, a mixed recycling container, garbage. And recycling's been a law for them, too. It's just because it didn't have the teeth that it was supposed to, doesn't mean that the law wasn't always there and that most, most people are already doing it.
But. That's good.
Yeah.
Oh.
I'm Ed Farady.
But I love you.
Okay, thank you.
But who are you?
I'm Ed Farady from Farady Incorporated.
Thank you.
Ed, you might as well stay there. I think you get to talk next, so you might as well just stay there. Oh, he's got to get his notes, okay. Any other questions? But is it safe to say that most people won't actually know that we've changed the ordinance?
Probably not.
Yeah. It's what I figured. This was mostly state law.
Except Barb's house.
Yeah, that, my house, right. All right.
Ed, I guess I have, I do have a question. I, I believe I read that corrugated cardboard is supposed to be separated and bound?
If you're reading instructions that say that, that's not the new single-stream instructions that we have, because you don't have to, it has to be flattened.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be bound. It has, we do ask for it to be flattened, and that's because in a single-stream system, everything is mixed together. So if you have open cardboard boxes, things go inside of them, and then they go off with the cardboard instead of to where they should go. So it's to make it a little purer system.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, other questions? Howard, are you finding that part where it said bound and see?
No, maybe, maybe it didn't. I thought I read that somewhere.
Or maybe it was in one of the.
It was probably, probably in the, in the current ordinance, but.
It might.
I'm hoping that I took that out of the, out of the proposed ordinance. I will double-check it just to be sure.
I was just asking more for personal reasons, because I haven't been doing that.
Yes.
So I see on page R ninety, corrugated paper or other container boards shall be free of debris. The container shall be placed in the approved recycling bin and placed upon the curb on the day. It doesn't say anything about tying it up. Okay. It doesn't actually even say anything about flattening it.
We'll make that correction.
All right. Any more questions on the garbage and refuse collection and disposal revision to our Chapter eleven? Then we'll move on to Contract twenty dash twenty-five, Solid Waste and Recycling Contract. This is for the years two thousand and twenty-six to two thousand and thirty. So Howard, I guess we start with you, and then we'll hear from Ed.
We currently have a five-year contract with Farady Incorporated for solid waste and recycling that expires at the end of this year. The current contract calls for collection from one and two-family residential properties, trashcans on Main Street and Second Street weekly, and from all city facilities except the Borowski Center and museums. The cost of collection from trashcans and city properties is included in the residential cost. So is the cost of spring and fall cleanup. The cost is broken into separate costs for solid waste or garbage and recycling per household per month. So it was my oversight that we didn't include the museums in the last one. So it would add three cents per household per month. And so I'm recommending that we include it in the upcoming contract. I do not recommend including the Borowski Center, because that's paid for as part of the rental package that we have. Our current contract allows an escalator clause for the Consumer Price Index with a cap at three percent. Farady Incorporated reserves the right to appear before the common council to request an additional increase for unforeseen conditions, but that has never happened in, in my time here. So you see the items here. It just so happened that a couple of the other communities were doing the same sort of thing. And lo and behold, out of four local, or five local communities, we happen to have the, the lowest price between Platteville, Lancaster, Cuba City, Fenimore, and Veronaqua. So I think this is an excellent deal. We've had excellent service for many decades, and we hope to, we hope to continue.
I don't, actually, I don't need to say anything. I think, I think Howard covered it for me.
That may be true. But maybe there are questions.
Okay.
For instance, at one point in time, we talked about the whole recycling enterprise. And at first, you got money to take things to recycling. Do you still kind of get?
Oh, do I get, so when I get, pick, pick up my recycling, I take it to a, a single-stream sorting system in Madison Pelletary Waste Systems, and they rebate me back on markets and then their cost. They charge me X amount per tonnage for sorting. So it does kind of reflect on what the markets do. Markets have been pretty stable for some time now. I know they're talking about maybe some tariffs having some effects on plastic markets and stuff like that right now. But they haven't been way up there, but they haven't been rock bottom. They've just been kind of holding steady. So we do get a little rebate check from them, a little bit on that.
On them.
Helps cover the cost a little, yep.
Yeah, that's good. Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. Not only have you, for as long as I can remember, done it very well. And your customer service, by evidence of your bandaged hand, is quite admirable. So we are very appreciative of the service how you take care of the city of Platteville.
I was just looking through some newspaper clippings, and I pulled out one that was a picture of my father sitting at a desk, and it said nineteen seventy-one, when he was awarded the city contract.
Oh, really?
Wow, seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
He also happened to have a problem with his thumb about the same time.
Same age.
In the same age. But I don't think, I don't think you were looking in the newspaper for that information. No. I, I agree. I think that I've seen your guys help each other, help residents, yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Well, this will be voted on at the next meeting. The rate for recycling, five fourteen, the waste service, six ninety-eight. So per month, per unit is twelve dollars and twelve cents. And there is.
Plus six cents.
Oh, so now you've added that to waste service, so it'll be now. Oh, so now you've added that to waste service, so it'll be now $7.01.
$7.01, correct.
$7.01. So it'll be $12.15.
Correct.
Okay, and then this contract will again have the CPI not to exceed 3%. Okay, good. Any other questions? We'll go on to our next thing, which is authorizing a pool construction contract.
Madam President, the city of Platteville has issued a request for proposals for construction services in preparation for the Aquatic Center. This construction project will focus on the repouring of the pool vessel and decking, the necessary mechanical systems and renovations to the bathhouse is detailed within the debt plan documents. The bid packages are presented in three different packages, including construction of the pool vessel, again, the mechanicals, and the other improvements of the plans. Each package includes several alternate options that include water features and other added value items. Details for submission can be found off of our platville.org website under the dropdown City Hall Bids and RFPs hyperlink. The construction site is located, of course, at Platteville Aquatic Center on 1155 Fourth Street in Platteville, Wisconsin. This package will be subcontracted through our construction manager as a contractor, which is Epic Construction. Bids will be opened on Wednesday, October 1st, at 10:00 a.m. Staff is anticipating then bringing forward a recommendation for awarding a bid or authorizing awarding of a bid at our October 14th Common Council meeting. Staff will be providing a tabulation sheet and proposed agreement costs at that meeting. Bringing this forward to your attention, of course, to help advertise that we have bid packages out there, would like to see our local contractors get involved, and then also giving you a heads-up then that if you're available and interested, you can watch our bid openings right here at 10 o'clock. Otherwise, we'll be bringing the information to you at your next meeting. Madam President.
Okay. Any questions on this? How many? You had a pre-bid.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah. On September 18th, we had a pre-bid meeting, and we had six contractors there, so we were pretty excited. Mechanicals, some large contractors that could do it all, so it was good. A lot of good questions. I think it's a good format. And our construction manager at risk has been there every day since we put the fence up, so we stopped by, and that was good to see, too. So pretty excited.
If you've not seen it, Bob, can you describe where we're at with the demolition?
Sure. All the decking is off and brought into the center, and then they just started on the walls. They now bring a hammer, a large hammer, to break it up into smaller chunks so that that can be emptied, and then the floor will begin. So it should, it's a matter of days, and that big hole will be there. And then the contractor Owen will start the backfill that will put the grade in there, so they were going to go up into two and a half feet of final grade before construction. So we'll actually start constructing as soon as it's out. So the only step before that would happen, of course, would be Chosen Valley come in there and do their borings for a complete evaluation, make sure we got all the bad soil out of there, so.
And so is CVT scheduled?
CVT is scheduled, yep. Soon as, as soon as they can get in, they will be doing the borings.
Okay. Good.
Yeah. Moving along nicely now.
Good.
Ashlyn? When you come back with the bids, will there be a timeline as far as, I mean, people say, when are they going to start? What do they think then that might be completed, that type of thing?
Yes, and that information will be provided as well. It was brought up in the pre-bid meeting, and all contractors there knew that the goal start date is in November. It has always, our timeline has been met, so yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? All right, then, let's move down to Item D, Amending the 2026 Budget Schedule.
Madam President, staffer requested an amendment to the 2026 budget schedule. The 2025 City Manager Operational Budget Review Session, tentatively scheduled for October 21st, is our intended line review of the department budgets. Moving the meetings would allow for, to an alternate date would be beneficial to the council and the city manager to ensure that necessary staff are available to respond to detailed questions. The proposed alternate dates were kind of provided to you in the summary. I think I've got some responses here, and maybe Lynn, if I can get yours. It appears that Wednesday, October 15th, at 6:00 p.m. is the most optimal time for council?
6:00 p.m.?
Yes, ma'am. Wednesday, October 15th, at 6:00 p.m. Are we doing, do we do that one in PD, or we do it here?
We usually do it at the PD training room.
Doug, can we crash at your place on Wednesday?
Excellent.
Okay, so then by consent, if there's, if we can arrange, arrange, align at that, and we'll get that agenda put together as well. Madam President.
Well, that was a, that was an easy one.
Well done, everyone. That was some hot government. Good job.
We have awarding a contract for building inspector services, and this will be Joe.
Yes, Rick Wannicker, our Building Inspector, has submitted his letter of resignation. His last day will be December 1st, so we are beginning the process of finding his replacement. We have made the decision to look at contracting out building inspection services, so as part of that, we submitted a request for proposals from billing inspection firms that'd be interested in providing those inspection services, which would be all one- and two-family inspections, as well as multifamily, commercial, industrial inspections per local ordinance, as well as the state of Wisconsin codes. So the proposals were due on the 15th. We received three proposals from three firms. Total Inspection Services, which is based in Blanchardville, Wisconsin. MSA Professional Services, based in Baraboo, and then General Engineering Company, which is based in Portage, Wisconsin. So in all three cases, the firms will have basically a designated inspector, which will be the prime contact for the city, will do the, obviously, the bulk of the inspections that are needed, but they also have other inspectors on staff that are more specialized that they bring in as needed to fill any gaps that the local inspector does not have as far as certification. So for instance, if they need to bring in a commercial plumbing inspector, they would come in and do those inspections, or a commercial electrical inspection is a little bit more rare for an inspector to have those certifications, so they would bring those in. And obviously, if the local inspector is on vacation or not available for some other reason, they would have somebody to fill in. And that was, I think I had mentioned this at a previous meeting, that was kind of my concern moving forward, is having one inspector in this size community is asking for potential problems if that inspector is on vacation or otherwise not available. So having a contract inspector puts the burden of filling in those gaps with them, rather than for us to try to figure out how to have those inspections completed if they're not available. So in each case, again, they will have, we haven't figured out the details, but they'll have some designated office hours. But for the most part, anybody who needs to get ahold of the inspector will contact them directly. They'll have phone numbers and direct email addresses that they can contact, and obviously, if they need to, they can contact the city as well. The city will continue to collect the permit fees, so that processing will remain the same, but the actual permits themselves will be issued by the inspecting firm. As far as compensation, Total Inspection Services and General Engineering Company both propose a 90% to 10% fee, as far as they will collect 90% of the building permit fees, and then the city will keep the remaining 10% to cover our costs of administration, primarily, you know, processing the fees. MSA has a little bit different proposed schedule. They basically just bill for hourly rate or per inspection rate, rather than a flat percentage of the permit fees. And in all three cases, it's kind of anticipated and proposed to be that their fees will come from the building permits themselves. And so as part of that, there will be some changes to our fee schedule to make sure that the permit fees are adequate to cover their costs. And so when I sent out the RFPs, I did include our draft fee schedule that I had been preparing to do for adoption for 2026, regardless, even before this came up. So I sent that out and asked for input as far as what changes they would be proposing to those fees. And I didn't have it all consolidated in time for this packet, but I did put it all together on one spreadsheet, so you can see the direct comparison between our proposal and what those three firms would be looking at. So like I said, regardless, there will be some changes to the schedule, regardless of which firm we pick, and then, like I said, the intent is that those fees would cover the cost of the inspection services. So any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Number one, you know, at one point in time, we used to have a rental inspector, and then the state made it illegal for us to use fees to cover the cost of a rental inspector. What are the chances that the state will intercede and take away our ability to charge fees that get paid to contract this person?
I would think that would be very unlikely, because these firms and other firms do this all over the state.
I mean, I, I mean, I think we remember that here.
It's actually becoming more common to contract out for inspection services and to have a.
Right. I actually, I think most of the communities around here contract with the same.
Right.
And you'll bring us the proposed, your proposed fees. And this is for new construction and remodels?
Correct. Well, our fee schedule also has, you know, fences and decks and.
Those kind of things.
Yeah, signs.
Is any of it for, is, are there any instances in which the building inspector, building inspector would be a person that would condemn a property?
We have a raising permit fee, but yes, we're actually going through that situation now, where we have a inspector, general engineering, that's involved in a situation where we're looking to get a demolition of a property. So that would be.
That we initiated.
That we initiated. That would likely be a situation we would, that would be kind of an added inspection fee that we would have for a specialty situation like that.
Okay. My concern is if somebody, if a, if a citizen comes in and says, you know, you really should look at the property at whatever, 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 we think it's really unsafe and what have you, would the building, would this building inspector firm?
Yes. So part of their duties is to enforce our local Chapter 23 Building Code, which does have that portion of our code as far as dilapidated buildings and structures. It wouldn't be covered by a permit, so that would be something where we'd probably have to pay them a, you know, per inspection type of a fee, according to the fee schedule that we would agree with when we hire them.
Anybody else with questions? Okay, then we will see more information and more detail at the next meeting before we vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Good. Then we'll, we'll go along then. Those are the information and discussion items. We're now going to have a work session. Are we staying where we are?
Well, I think that would be best. I'm going to be presenting on the screen, and you'll be able to see it on the, on your screens there.
Okay. No, it's not a closed session. It's just a work session.
Whatever reason, when I put it into PowerPoint, it wants to jump around and the gremlins get in there. So if you're comfortable, we'll kind of keep it in this format. So thank you, Madam President. As we've went through in previous years, we're going to kind of continue with our, continue with our 2026 budget process. We are on September 23rd. We've ticked through about half of it on the schedule that was approved by council and even amended this evening. We're going, we're going to go into the five-year capital improvement document planning tonight. As a reminder, what is capital improvement planning? A capital improvement plan contains all the individual capital projects, equipment purchases, and major studies for local governments, in conjunction with construction and completion schedules, and consort with financial plans. The plan provides a five-year working blueprint for sustaining and improving the community's infrastructures. It coordinates strategic planning, financial capacity, and physical development, as CIP stands at the epicenter of a government's planning, public works, and finance departments. The CIP typically involves the following information: a listing of the capital projects, equipments, and major studies, ranking of those projects. Again, when we're talking CIP projects, it's projects that are of $10,000 of value or more, with a useful life of roughly five years of durability. It is a financial plan. It has a timetable for the funding years for the projects, and it's project justification with different classifications, itemization, and expansion for project expenditures. It includes also the recommendation for the next year's capital improvement budget, because remember now, a capital, capital improvement plan, we're going to be talking about five years, but when we typically approve a budget, it's what are we going to be doing in 2026? So most of tonight, our focus is going to be on that 2026, but we're also trying to keep an eye on the future over the next four years. Funding sources for a CIP, as we have our general obligation notes and bonds, and we have property taxes, federal-state funds, reserve funds, and other types of grant monies, local impact aid, private monies, ARPA funds, revenue bonds, and of course, in the city of Platteville, a lot of folks that come forward with donations that all go into our, our planning. Our presentation and our recommendations tonight, so we're going to talk on our process or review of how we kind of go through the machine and arrive at a recommendation tonight, and what maneuvers and levers you have yet to make tweaks and changes. We're going to review the tenets of financial changes and capacities. We're going to have items identified by the directors and the city manager review and recommendations. So in your packets, you received the plan, and if that's not bulky enough for you and intense enough for you, in this presentation, I'm going to try to walk you through how we arrived at that plan and showing you the changes that were taken and arriving at the document that you have in front of you tonight. At the conclusion of the presentation here this evening, then, we're hoping for open discussion, and you'll have question-and-answer opportunities, as well as if there is action from the council, you can take action to re-prioritize and adjust this as a policy as you see fit. But of course, in the realm of making sure that we have financial balance, so it has to be more than, I want to see this project happen. It's, I want to see this project happen, and in order to do that, we would have to remove a comparable expenditure from a different project, or add more funding and more burden, or some other type of a funding source to balance it. With it, too, we have an opportunity to talk about adding or refining detailed pages that are included in there, and again, if there's movements in years and priorities, those can be discussions as well. Changes in capacities, we continue to place deferred projects on what were considered the shelf or shovel-ready status, and if you remember, this is in context of a few years ago. We have our five-year financial forecasting plan that we do with Ellers, and Kayla and Brian, they come and show us our financial forecasting. In order to try to have transparency of the needs that were out there, we had a lot of projects that we kind of just forwarded out to year five, and it created this huge kind of artificial swell, where it wasn't necessarily financially feasible, but we didn't want to lose sight of those projects. So as an answer to that, we are now kind of projecting a five-year CIP plan of projects that we think are financially feasible underneath the current guidance that we're operating with, and then we have what is called a shelf or shovel-ready type of a document that kind of still houses, these are the needs, but they're not quite lining up yet with a five-year plan. If you remember, the city manager's theme in a 2024 budget was a gratitude and appreciation. And that was in response to the state of Wisconsin increasing the supplemental shared revenue and providing us a penny on, on the five cents that came down to us, to local governments in the revenue, shared revenue program. Last year, then, we engaged in a, a mindset of realignment as we kind of came off of that now. And then with the theme of closing a very successful TID 5 with a Walmart, Menards, proposing that we enter this type of a year with the idea of a reinvestment, taking those funds now that are going to be coming into our general levy and reinvesting that equity back into services on behalf of the community. A review of the tenants, we took a look at this just a few weeks ago with our discussion that we had over in PD and final, and finished here on where we're at. We know through our conversations we just had with Kayla that we are kind of bumping into that, you know, maintain less than 3.5% of total equalized value. We are at 80% capacity. We still have about $7 million before we would reach that. Again, that self-imposed ceiling. And in our previous conversations and actions, we know that our tenants of borrowing no more than the previous year's retire principal and also kind of the primarily designating CIP borrowing towards street reconstructions are, you know, ideas that we had on here that we knowingly took actions of saying we're going to deviate from that. As we go forward into previous or next year's 2027 types of plannings, we'll be revisiting these at the very front end and deciding if these are still good ideas or if they need to be changed and flexed to meet the goals that we have in mind. As you just saw in the presentation packet with the borrow again, a reiteration. This is from that table four that we just reviewed with Kayla. With the proposed borrowing for this year, we anticipate entering, entering into 2026 at 56% of our capacity underneath statutory law for your borrowing as well as then 80% for our, our self-imposed policy at 3.5%. The 2026 CI, CIP process has went as we have done in the last few years with a few incremental tweaks. But essentially how it begins is with the city manager releasing the 2026 budget and CIP guidance. Those were documents that we did review at council and shared information on what that was going to look like through information and discussion. Director of Administration then releases the CIP worksheets, which are very to-do spreadsheets that are all compounded with the different detailed sheets that feed into department cover sheets that feed into total organizational cover sheets that feed into summary sheets. And, and her and Jeff spend a lot of time in trying to organize those with the changes that a city manager throws on to finance department as well as changes that we arrive at through the directors as well. Directors complete and submit those projects. The accounting and finance manager compile those projects. The director presents to the city manager and the director of administration. It is reviewed then by myself. I give notifications to the directors of recommended changes that are going to be made to their proposals of which we'll be reviewing tonight. And then the recommendation comes to the city council and we ask for guidance in preparing a final version of the CIP as well as what are the priorities going to be then for the 2026 CIP, which will be incorporated into the 2026 budget. Everybody's awake. You're doing very, very well. Just a few more slides to go here. Well, we're about a third of the way in. So as we talked about it, our last meeting, the request that came in initially from the directors is we arrived at about $1.4 million of requests in levy or reserve funding for these projects. And we received a request of approximately 3.3, 3.2 in general obligation debt to fund these projects. As we talked about again at the police station, our goal is to try to get that to approximately 850,000 and to try to get down to 1.3, which was the principal retired. But we also though, recognize that we have a fire engine that's coming due and it is a 30-year type of a project. And we made the, the knowing decision then to also include that into an added-on expense for this project. Okay, so that's all the front load information. Now we're going to transition and we'll talk about now each budgets or each department's requests and adjustments that were made. The document that you have in front of you will follow kind of the same. If you've got the, the actual CIP plan gives you the actual changes that were made. These that I'm going to show you on this screen are what the directors provided to me, to us. And it indicates then with markups on the changes that were made. First one is Department of Administration. As we talked about with Nicola today, while this looks like no changes were made, and obviously that's my favorite department. We've had quite a few conversations in coming into this process. So some things were certainly left out before they were put on there and marked off.
Just know better not to ask.
Not to ask, yeah. It's three pages. He said three items that we arrived at. Yes.
So it just says capital of project levy and reserves 50 grand. What, for what? Where do we find?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I should probably talk on what we're. So the projects that we see here is the CIP contingency on the bottom here as well as the IT infrastructure that happens out in 2027 and then a phone system replacement anticipated for 2028. So the expenditure lines are on the bottom of this chart. And then you're seeing the top section there, the funding sources on where the proposed funding or the revenue sources are going for them. Now with these, I would say with this one too, there is a potential with a phone system replacement. Then in working with the university and Rafe, we're going to see if Teams phone can be a solution for us possibly reducing these expenses with renewing licensing through a Mitel system or considering a Cisco system or something of that nature. If you want to expound upon that, Nicola.
Yes, I'll only just say that the university has implemented a Teams-based phone system. So Microsoft Office-based phone system through the Teams application within Office 365. And we are going to, with the new fire facility, we are going to explore utilizing the same for the fire facility with the understanding that of course it would need to talk to our current system and make sure that it was seamless. So first the university, see how their experience is, then our own microcosm to see how that works and then potentially review that as a solution for the city. And, and it's our anticipation at this point that if that was a solution, that it would be less expensive than replacing, you know, the system that we currently have with a whole new system. The system we currently have works fine, but support for the system ends in 2020, 2028. So we need to have a new system by then.
Thank you. Moving into the police department's budget, you'll see what is, was submitted and what has been marked up here. So again, there was adjustments on the top for revenue sources. And some of this is going to deviate as well as with revenue sources and changes yet to be made. So kind of for sake of kind of zooming in on what is the expenditure and the items that were anticipated to be adjusted. We've taken the camera system. There was a request for $65,000. And rather than trying to implement that into 2026, guidance kind of went out to saying to the extent of, well, let's piecemeal this over the next five years and try to break into 15,000. See if that can cover a project or potentially we might have to wait till every other year to implement a project. And in working with Doug and TC Network, trying to not necessarily say that the, you know, balance between the low hanging fruit on what might be able to be achieved. But then also where's the most tacticable placements for cameras? Other, I'm sorry.
So currently have a truck?
They do.
Okay, so this is a replacement.
A replacement, correct.
Some notes on the budget as well as squad replacement. In the 2025 CIP funding, we left, it left us behind in a rotation. I believe there was a request this year for two in which we only decided to fund one. We had an unfortunate event with a collision which required us then to go shopping. And Doug was able to procure for us a used one that has some mileage. There might be then a tick up of having to replace, you know, a used vehicle that is going to come up in the rotation again. The CVSO truck, we did do an adjustment as well. It was initially a $35,000 request, but we plan on using proceeds from sale against that. The cameras, as talked about, is stretched out into $15,000 annually, starting in 2027. And then there was another adjustment too to the IT server for the police department. It was removed or shelved from this project and we're anticipating that we might have room for that expense actually underneath the IT budget that is housed underneath administration. Moving into the fire department budget. We've got a few adjustments here. You'll be looking at an adjustment to a fire department UTV and an adjustment to an inspector vehicle. And with those, the guidance is to move that UTV. There were some conditions where the current or the new UTV, UTV perhaps would not fit into the existing trailer. And it would require potentially a outside type of a store-in type of an issue. Because we're building a new facility, guidance is to, let's just hold another few months. We plan on occupying in 20, late in 2026. We'll hold off and potentially a 2027 cycle when we have a new building to house these toy, these new equipments that we have. And we'll plug them in at that point. With an inspector vehicle, it's been moved to 2027 in a plan for a possible PD hand-me-down squad, which would account for a smaller adjustment. Ryan doesn't like that idea at all, but that's where we're at at the present. And there was also a request on here and an indication that we need to look at our severe weather warning system. But we did move that to a shelf for the sake of also trying to see if we could piecemeal that. That's like a $65,000 project roughly. And that's going to probably have to be considered in a phase and really kind of tactically thinking that out as well with the adjustments of knowing that if we part from a fire facility, that's going to be another site that we're going to have to reconsider possibly locating somewhere downtown as well. And then again, engine eight replacement. There is a petition that was approved and consented that that is going to be a standing low, a standalone type of an item in addition to our annual reoccurring CIP expenses. Yes.
I did have a question about the inspector's car because when I read that earlier, I thought $15,000 is not much for a car. And, but then when I was reading, there was also the insurance policy from the, the previous car that was totaled by the hailstorm. So was, was there $15,000 in insurance payment?
It, it's not going to be quite 15,000, but it's close to that, that the insurance payment. But that wasn't the original submittal. So that's why it's been modified. The original submittal was about 80 some thousand like the other vehicle. So.
So.
We're looking at options, you know, to try and save money. Clinton then reckon, recommended the use of a PD vehicle, but I'm not sure that's going to work. There are two different types of vehicles, so we'll have to look at that as a option or not, or just might have to, you know, get pushed when it is available to.
So we're taking the insurance payout.
That right now, that amount is just.
Plus $15,000.
No, there, it's, it's not during the 15,000 was roughly the insurance payout plus probably resale of the old vehicle. So there's no extra money in there right now to actually cover the cost. That would not fund the vehicle.
Thank you.
Do you folks have any more questions in regards to fire? Okay, moving into the most of the funnest ones, public works. A lot of ink on here. There's a lot of different moving parts, a lot of different infrastructure, obviously underneath these budgets. In moving down, you'll see that the first ink up is on the two and a half ton dump truck. I think we had some estimates that came in late in the game and suggested that perhaps we want to switch that from 145 to 150. There's also the Henry Street reconstruction. These amounts were adjusted from a 600,000 in 2026 to a 20 in a 140,000 in 2026, 2027. This is kind of from a twofold type of an element, I believe. The main piece being that this is a project that is paid for by the Department of Transportation. And for accounting purposes, I'll let Nicola explain why we would do the reduction here.
So we're trying to more accurately capture the movement of funds through our accounts. And there's two types of grant funding, particularly with the DOT. One is where the DOT runs the project. They, they set the project, they pay the contractors and then they bill the city for the local share of, of the project. And the other is where the, the city is awarded a grant but has to pay all the bills first and then has to submit to the, the state to get reimbursed for those costs. And so rather than showing projects that will only ever pay a, a smaller bill of the total project, rather than showing those as a huge amount of revenue and a huge amount of expense, which won't actually happen, we are, we adjusting so that we're just going to show the, the expense and the matching revenue, the piece that we'll be paying when the state pays the majority and just bills us. On the other hand, if we have a project like the CISP, Signal Replacement Project is one where we have to spend all the money in advance and then we have to apply for reimbursement. And it's a pretty hefty project. It's 800,000 plus dollars. And so we want to show that because we want to be all mindful that that is cash out of pocket that we won't earn interest on, that we have to think about the cash flow overall for the city for those projects. So, and we will have all those expenses flowing through the expense account and then all the revenues coming in from the state. So, so that's the difference in how we're representing those projects.
Thank you. Moving down, then you're going to see some adjustments to a section there with the Jefferson Street Reconstruction and also the Union Street Reconstruction. Those projects were proposed as needs, but in light of moving the East Main Street construction project towards the bottom to, as a priority and still maintaining an idea of a 1.3-ish borrow for, for the total project, those all get shifted to the right. And then with that, you'll see further street projects that are also kind of then correspondently getting shifted out to make availabilities into future years. The Southwest Road Sidewalk Project is currently shelved. The Tar Kettle Project, we've moved from 2027 to 2030 based on the idea that, fingers crossed, it still operates for us and, and lasts us out until that timeframe. The East Main, Main Street Construction Project, again, we've adjusted in 2027 for the same purposes as that we just kind of described with Henry Street on just capturing what our expenditure and going toward our ledger is going to be. The Seventh Avenue to Jewett Street is then also shifted to the right as well as Sunset Drive Reconstruction, the Union Street Reconstruction. And then we did add in here then also the State Highway 81 Reconstruction with the many components of small amounts that stretch out in the actual main construction then is kind of established for.
2033.
2033. So with that too, we anticipate adding that is kind of a tenant for our next budget of saying this is a project we're kind of committing to as a CIP project that's way out in 2033 to keep it in mind. The second sheet then captures the other adjustments then to the streets again with the idea of shifting those to the right. And I want to thank staff, Nicola and Jeff again for making these changes. And then also in the final product of breaking those down in corresponding years, which makes it much easier on the eyes than Clint's presentation here tonight. We've talked on those.
Just a minute.
Yes, go ahead.
I want to go back to the dump truck. So is this another dump truck? Or is this the same dump truck we talked about tonight?
No, they're, they're different ones. We, we have a rotation schedule. We have six dump trucks. They last roughly 12 years, so we get a, we get a new dump truck every even year. The problem was with this, we had to get the truck in 24 and the box in 25. And that's why we've got a lot of the different moving parts. And we're trying to get back into our schedule so that we have a truck in 26 and then the next one in 28.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say too, Howard, if memory serves, this one also had the considerations for an emission.
Yes, the, the 2028, we have additional emissions issues. And that's why the cost went up dramatically.
2028 or 2026?
2028 is 320,000, whereas 26, we're looking at 150.
Well, that's just half.
Oh, that was the half.
I think we talked about two, if this is, we were going to, I tried to see if I could twist it to push this further down the path. And I believe conversations went towards there's a change in emissions that are coming up, which we anticipate. anticipate to increase cost and then also with the new emissions and regulations on engines, we felt like we didn't want to be in the first year of of what that's going to look like on products and giving it a year to solve some problems before we continued on. If that is that my off base?
That's correct, yes.
So Howard, do we have a fleet of five or six dump trucks that are operable right now?
Six of them, yes.
One thing I was kind of curious about, do we use them all at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
During this, during a snow event.
During snow.
They're all on the street at the same time.
When, Bob, when does Parks use the dump truck?
We have a dump truck too, and that too, when snow events, we haul ours too as well.
Okay.
So, yep.
Yeah, I was just wondering if they could be shared somehow and if they weren't all being used at the same time, if Parks could have one and I I didn't know there was a need for
And ours is a little small, smaller, a little more agile, you know.
Okay.
It's a little bit of a different kind of truck, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question about the dump truck too. So in other words, if we were going to buy that in 2026, it'd be 100 and 150,000. But because of an emissions changes, it's going to cost 320,000?
2028.
Yeah. What kind of emission changes?
We we funded, because of supply chain issues, we were having to order the chassis first and 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 then it would be over a year later before we would get the box built and put on the chassis. So we actually split the cost into two years. And so the 150,000 you're seeing there is the second half of a truck, not the whole truck.
Sorry, yes, you're
So it is the same truck we talked about tonight?
Yes.
It is the same truck?
Yes, it is. You're right. Yes.
It's the same truck we talked about tonight?
Half one and half two.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. No, I don't. Yeah, no, it's more the tune of about the 20,000 type of a difference. Other items that are coming up here too. So then you'll see we're going to be refining then our lists of deferred street projects. It kind of ticks on here of the year that they were initially planned, the year that they are kind of deferred now on the anticipated CIP for those that are on the five-year plan. The estimated costs and such that we have for water sewer and then the total project costs.
So how much are we increasing the water and how much are we? What percentage are we increasing by year on the water sewer and total estimated cost? Because we can't believe that we could delay this project for five years and pay the same amount in five years. So are we increasing the water and sewer amounts by 3%, by 4%, by how much?
Roughly 5%.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And second page continued. Moving into the library, a request from a director and from the board. Get on here for tech replacement, security cameras, carpet replacement, first floor carpet replacement, second floor, self-checkout replacement. And trying to balance these against all the other projects at the same time, it becomes challenges. At the same time, looking for a method to try to give security and predictability to a library board and to a director. We've arrived at proposing a solution much like we do with an airport commission of saying we're going to set aside an annual amount to contribute towards the library board. And then through very crafty maneuvering and petitioning by a director, allowing them to kind of work with other revenue sources to be able to piece their CIP plan together out there. And so the the context though that we would be asking for is that this is annual installments that would be provided to this to the library. But it's for the replacement and renovation of existing buildings, grounds and equipment. And then we are, of course, going to continue our efforts to gain assurance and a timing of when we're going to have building acquisition at the library. If there's any questions that you had for myself or Jesse in regards to this approach. Otherwise, the story sounds quite the same for our companion Cody here at the museum to the same tune of allowing a predictable type of amount. We had two items that were presented. We had a 200-year celebration that the city manager pushed it this budget last year from a Joe budget in discussion that we've had with our committee, our group that we've been meeting now for the last few months. The flavor has been that we do not see as additional tax burden necessarily for this event. And so we're going to be liquidating that amount to roll it into other CIP projects. And then with the insulation of Hannah Robins attic, again, that's a more expensive project. But if we give predictability to Cody and to the board and to the friends of the museum, they can help do with their fundraising to try to put these and get these going in life. And I don't know, Cody, if you want to speak in context to too of how this fits in like with the strategic plan of the museum?
Yeah, so I mean, I could talk on quite a few pieces of the strategic plan. Financial stability is one of the things, right? If we, so the currently the top floor of the Hannah Robbins Building, which is where in that building on the second floor is where we have the majority of our collections. The collections need to be kept at a certain temperature as well as humidity level. As you can imagine, having the next floor, which is the attic space, that is not an insulated space. So in the dead of winter, in the dead, in the middle of the summer, we have quite some fluctuating temperatures in that area. So the big project that we're talking about is insulating that attic. So hopefully that will help to keep our heating and cooling prices down throughout the year. The other thing is we are trying to make an effort to gain control over intellectual control over our collections, right? So what we have in there, what is a part of the collections, what's educational? What does not have an object ID number that is not a part of the collections? And the attic does have quite a few things up there that we need to go through, so this honestly kind of gives us a kick in the butt to get going on that project and figuring out what's up in the attic and if it should be in the second floor, if it should be at a different museum, if it should be whatever. So it it fits mostly in those two categories. The financial stability and the intellectual control of the collections and what we have in the museum.
Thank you, Cody.
Oh, yeah, I've got a quick question. Has there ever been any consideration, you were talking about eventually taking that attic or the third floor and kind of cleaning it out? Or getting rid of things that you no longer want or need? Has there been any consideration of moving the stuff in the Rock School that has to be maintained at a specific humidity level and temperature to the Hannah Robbins Building? So both buildings don't have to have climate control?
I don't know if that has been a conversation. I would I would just argue that, you know, the Rock School is a piece of our collections. It's one of the largest pieces of our collections and you could certainly not have it as climate controlled, but I wouldn't suggest that we cut AC or heating from those buildings. I don't know if that's what you're
Yeah, I was just wondering because a lot of the stuff in the Rock School, it's, you know, newspapers and artwork, they has to be protected.
Yep. So right now in the Hannah Robbins, we do not have appropriate space for all of that. The upstairs, which was the was used for the Roundtree Gallery in the past, is a really amazing space. Probably pretty similar to this space here, actually. And it it allows us to store the the paper, the books, all of that sort of stuff in a way that it can be accessible to our staff. And then if people are coming into research, looking at the newspapers, we have space for that too.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cody. Moving into Parks Forestry and Rec. So with this, you're going to see tractor mower replacement. We did an adjustment there of adding again a projection out for the fifth year. The same with the play, Parks and Playground contingency of a adding of 15,000 in 2030. I would make a note on this one that this is kind of what we see as the budget line for helping also cover down on the inclusive playground. But we're also hoping to have in our partnership with ICI and that group to be able to help in maintaining that particular project. There's also a change then for the Prairie View drop-off point that was put on a shelf. And then unfortunately, we received notification this, just this morning that the DNR did not accept that as a project for a grant. So that will kind of remain on the shelf to see if there is in fact another funding opportunity that comes available for it. There are the occasions where the DNR realizes that other projects that are approved with other municipalities and government entities and they don't follow through. And then sometimes you get asked and invited to come back into it. We'll see if that happens. The basketball court was put in there at 33,750. I believe I had given guidance then to administration to put that down to 18 at one point, and I think that's what arrived in your packets. But then we've had conversation now with Parks Forestry Rec's board and with Bob and think that we can use funding sources from one of our Parks Foundations. So that will stay at a 33,750. So we were going to adjust that back and with a correlating revenue source then in the top to match that.
Where is the basketball court?
That is, it is
Smith Park, right?
Smith Park, yeah, the north.
Which one?
Northeast corner, yep.
It's one right
The large one.
Where the swimming pool parking lot is.
Thank you, Bob. I was going to say it's on the slide below Prairie View Drop Off. Thank you. Heated shop. So that is a project also that we've talked about in extent, and you would have also seen that on our tours and such, but at the, at this point, it's recommended as a shelved item. The Parks Dump Truck, which we recently just kind of talked about and what the purposes of that is going to be pushed out for replacement 2028. Moving into community development, you're going to see that we do have a project on there for the East Main Street Site Closure. It arrives in this budget in 27 and 28. All that being said, and the adjustments that are on there with some slight tweaking for a Parks and Rec's budget with revenue sources and such for the expenditure for the parks or for the basketball court and some other little ancillary expenses that may come along the way. Those changes bring the budget down to 825,000. If you remember, our goal is 850 that we're applying for direct levy support. And it gets us down to 2.3, 2.4 type of a window. If you remember, our goal of retired principal is at 1.3. But we're also considering though that added fire engine, which kind of ticks it up then to a 2.4, if that makes sense. And then I do have a couple of slides here that Nicola is going to be able to kind of walk us through to kind of put some visual to the many numbers that you're being presented here tonight.
Sure. So we can just whizz through these fairly quickly so we get to that discussion point. But essentially, the first one is showing all of the funding sources, including water sewer revenue bonds and water sewer cash reserves. Those are explained underneath, but it gives you a snapshot of where the funding is coming from for the various aspects of our CIP. The next slide is showing all of the departments' usage, including water sewer. So you can see that the water sewer does drive a lot of our CIP, but that is funded primarily through water sewer revenue bonds with also some cash. And then the next largest segment is Public Works. And then you also see the fire engine in red there in the 2026 column being represented. On the next slide, we see the uses by department, but now without the water sewer included because the water sewer is such a large proportion that it's helpful sometimes to 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 look at everything else without the water sewer. So it just gives you a better representation of how much money Howard is responsible for in the yellow there. And and then you also see some things for the fire department in the police station and so forth. So now we have, I'm just focusing on 2026. So we thought it would be helpful for you to see how does this plan break out all the budget for 2026 in terms of the various funding sources? And so there you see that the water sewer revenue bonds would be 45% with the GO debt, general obligation promissory notes at 33%. And then levy and reserves at 11% and so on. And then finally, the uses just for 2026, also giving you a sense of the the proportion for each department's use of the funding for CIP. And so you see there water sewer, the majority, and then Public Works and Fire. And then everybody else gets a little bit.
For transparency's sake then, and making sure that we don't lose sight of the things that are being taken or postponed and deferred outside of a 2025 CIP plan, we have our shelf. And these are the projects that are currently kind of sitting on there awaiting a time where a funding source surfaces and knock on wood. Hopefully not awaiting a time when these things break unforeseen and we have to expedite and prioritize those up to the front.
May I add a comment on that subject? So just to point out that one of our strategies, you know, this year and in last, starting last year, I believe, is to develop a CIP contingency where, you know, we may have several items of equipment that could break but are working fine right now. And the idea is that rather than having to fund all of those pieces of equipment within the budget, if we could develop a CIP contingency, then if a piece of equipment breaks, but it wasn't in the budget, then we have the funds to replace it. So we just feel like that's a way to try to get our arms around, you know, the the understanding that something might break, but therefore we don't have to put all of those things in the budget at the same time.
Thank you. So what this plan does for us, it meets many of the identified needs and creates financial feasibility for a five-year projection. This plan incorporates an additional 1.1 million for the replacement of the fire engine as we discussed. This action deviates from our, what we call tenants of the no more than retired principal as well as well as the primary borrowing for street reconstruction. But in reviewing our financial policy, we, you know, we, these aren't hard written into a policy. It's been good practice principles that we've been following to try to be responsible stewards of our our tax dollars. This plan also incorporates the East Main Reconstruction Project as the primary street reconstruction for 2026 and going forward. And it defers others projects into later years as we discussed in going through Public Works. This plan does address replacement of several fleet vehicles for police, fire, streets and transportation. Other actions, though, of what this plan does not do, a street reconstruction, this five-year projection of the budget remains built on an estimated 1.3 to 1.5 that you're seeing stretching out for the five years. To achieve a recommended 40-year replacement, our life cycle on streets needs to tick up to an estimated $4 million locally annually. And this is going to be a heavier conversation that I am planning on working with the council on in 2026 as we try to get our arms around this and get this wrestled in before we have a lot of folks showing up for CIP meetings and and talking about streets that they that they need replaced. It also does not address our lease fleet. As we talked about last year in length, we have vehicles that were that were leasing through Enterprise System. It's been a working relationship that we work with these folks, but we do have concerns on when we, as we talked about last year, when we engaged into the Enterprise Lease System, we anticipated that there was a large government bonus or reduction in costs that is since evaporated. So our return in selling these back doesn't quite get us the big bang we thought we were going to be able to get and then repurchasing the next one. We talked about trying to do this this year, but unfortunately with a hail event that kind of postponed kind of postponed a lot of financial decisions on how we thought we were going to be able to move on things as we sorted out what we were going to do with our fleet in its entirety. But we have not lost sight on trying to crack that nut as well. And deferred maintenance, this plant, this plan is built with many lingering deferred maintenance challenges that we are aware about. But we are working with UW Platteville in development of an asset inventory database to help us better track, assess, and report on those conditions of our buildings, grounds, and equipments. As we move into building what will be a twenty-twenty-seven budget, thereabout in twenty-twenty-six, as we talked about in the last meeting, I'll be working with staff on trying to bring forward a proposal on policy of evaluating what we have in debt capacity, or what we're using, I should say, in debt capacity, and trying to queue that into sections of how much is appropriate of that debt capacity to queue towards streets, how much is appropriate to queue towards buildings, and how much of it is appropriate to queue towards equipment. So when we're having these conversations, it is a challenge to try to compare the what's most important when you're talking about police tasers versus a street versus lactation pods versus all these many components that we try to get our arms around. So we're going to try to break those down. As well with that, too, anticipating when we build a twenty-twenty-seven budget, having early discussions with you folks on tax burden and kind of getting a flavor and a feel of what you folks and your constituents think is appropriate for considering for ceilings to put in place. It doesn't necessarily have to be hard in numbers, but try to put some language on, you know, we anticipate this type of a ceiling unless these types of reasons exist or they have that type of a discussion very early in the process. And then inserting a specific session on streets. Some of that conversations might include as well discussions on potentially special assessments and other type of funding mechanisms that we think that we can potentially bring to the table to help us get long-term success. I didn't want to do this, but here it is. This could be a complete distractor, and I want us to stay focused on the main goal of this evening, but this came down the pipe last week. The non-state grant is now open for the Department of Administration. With that, there's some changes from last year. It's a fifty-million-dollar pot of money that is the Department of Administration's kind of, and we'll say pork belly, but it's to help local community projects. The cap on it is municipality or an organization can request up to two million. You have to do fifty percent match. Any type of ownership, or there has to be an ownership interest, though, that the state potentially would have a warranty deed or a twenty-year land use restriction if they're awarded. But trying to be on the front end of this, we've got till the end of the month to sort this out. Looking for inputs in your discussion part of this conversation on where you think that it might be a good idea to apply for a grant? Or do you not want to apply for a grant and allow for other organizations that, whether it's friends or foundations or hospitals or school districts? Do you want to, to put our, an idea out there? Okay, so hoping to touch on that in the discussion section. And then the final slide on here is just to kind of put some context to this. So the total twenty-twenty-five tax rate, tax levy was about five-point-four million, and that, last year, we had a mill rate of about six-point-four-three. Looking forward into this year, we're looking at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, or I'm sorry, last year paid in twenty-twenty-five, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, which is kind of our, our mean rating or mean house value, paid about one-thousand-six-hundred-seven dollars in the city's portion of property tax. This year, we're anticipating about a one percent increase in a tax rate equates to about seventeen dollars annually on that size or that appraised amount of a house. Likewise, then, if we're doing considerations of increases or decreases that are going into direct CIP levy, about fifty-seven thousand-ish equates to a one percent increase or decrease in a tax rate. And then if we're talking about, though, of course, doing a, a borrow, then that's an amortized type of a solution. So for about seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars of borrowed money equates to that same one percent gain or takeaway for levy in twenty-twenty-six. And so again, I would turn it over to yourself then, Madam President, for additional questions that you might have of myself and for staff here tonight, as well as if there's any thoughts on guidance for the non-state grant. And then any actions that you would like to do to see an added or refined object, those can be made as well tonight. If there's movement or reprioritization of projects or actions to add or such, we'd be looking, though, that it's also accompanied with a financial balance, again, on what is going to be reduced, or are we going to be adding additional revenues or tax burden, Madam President?
Okay, we did not announce action for this work session, so I don't think we can take formal action in terms of a motion and a second.
Correct. I'd plan on collecting those, and then we could, at the next meeting, take.
We'd have to, so we would not be doing that. All right, so questions? Things you saw, you have questions on, things you didn't see, wonder why you didn't see them?
I have a question for Howard, and I, I should know this because it pertains to the trail, but for trail maintenance. And this in our screen, it's on page one ninety-seven. And I noticed for twenty-fourteen, it's a hundred and seven thousand dollars, but then every following year, it's around seven or eight dollars.
Actually, what that was is that was one hundred thousand dollars for a trail grant for Mountview Park, the circular trail, and then the seven thousand for our standard seal coating. That was another one that we found out this morning that got, that was not funded.
So that'll be reduced now to seven thousand?
That'll need to come off. That one hundred thousand.
Thank you, thank you.
And another question for Howard. East Main Reconstruction Project, my understanding is this is now, according to Nicola, this is, speaks only to the city's portion, not what East Main Reconstruction costs. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So the six hundred thousand is estimated to be used for?
For real estate acquisition.
And that's the only thing?
In twenty-twenty-six, yes.
Okay, so we don't have any other bills that we're paying on this?
Well, we will have some, we will continue to have some smaller bills for, for design work, but not for the actual construction. The construction in twenty-twenty-seven and our portion of the construction is listed in, in here for the construction part in twenty-twenty-seven.
And then the other portion that we need to pay ongoing is listed in your operations budget? I mean, you said there's going to be design and other things you have to pay that's in excess of six hundred, so where does that get listed? That's just my question.
That, that, I'm sorry, that was included in the six hundred. I mean, the, the real estate plus, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry if it.
Okay, I'm just.
Confuses, but yes.
Okay.
All, all of the expenses, the real estate and, and the small amounts of design costs would be included in that six hundred thousand.
Okay, other questions? No, no, I think Lynn had a question next.
Okay, so can we go back to the library and museum? Well, the library went up, I had to do. Question is for both. So prior to, I had some notes about, no, this is what I saw. This is what is on here, but when you did earlier, there were different numbers on here. I was gonna ask, just for explanation on what happened. So we see that they, the numbers are different from the numbers that you showed earlier, but there was an explanation.
Yep.
With.
I can iterate that if you.
Thank you. Yes, I just want to understand what happened with.
So, yes, the directors came forward with specific projects, and there's a lot of projects, and they're good projects, and, but to try to balance those against all the other services, the proposal that I kind of gave back to them is rather than addressing individually what we're going to do and we're not going to do, of just saying that, like we do with an airport commission, we're going to do annual installments out there. So as an example, the library, we anticipate contributing fifteen thousand in twenty-twenty-six, twenty thousand in twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-five thousand in years, twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine, and twenty-thirty, and allowing them to then decide what projects fit. And these are also important to probably recognize that these are non-lapsing amounts is when you're talking operation budgets, it's usually kind of use it or we lapse it. This would be a non-lapsing amount where if they don't use it in twenty-twenty-six, it would carry to twenty-twenty-seven, and they'd have thirty-five thousand available to address one of their CIP needs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but, so there was some writing, some red writing on here that I couldn't catch, and we kept going. There was something about, and maybe he can, you can explain it, because he went on and explained, he was explaining it, and then I wanted to ask Director Jesse, but then she left, because the reason I'm concerned is because when I looked at this, I'm thinking fifteen thousand for the library, okay, twenty thousand for the museum, and I know that the library saved us this summer with the amount of people that were coming in because we didn't have the parks, the, the pool and that kind of stuff, right? I know just being on the board that we, we need another person. And I'm just like, why is it that there is no, this is it. Yeah, this is the, the list that was there. Okay, so then what, what I'm seeing here is that. So there was a raise in the monies, because this, I said fifteen.
The, the fifteen stays on the top, yeah.
Right, 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 right. But this is thirty now.
Well, at the bottom, but you'll see that for the projects anticipated right now that Jesse has in mind for twenty-twenty-six, it was a tech replacement and a security camera project totaling thirty. Our contribution from the city was at fifteen, and then there was donations and other sources of five thousand, if that's what she still wants to go forward with doing in twenty-twenty-six. One stipulation that would be advisable, though, that is through this, again, as we're saying, the replacement and renovation of existing buildings, grounds, and equipment. Obviously, the library is a confined thing, but we wouldn't be looking to necessarily expand in a direction. It's to keep what we have in place, operational and restored.
Okay.
Correct, yes. What I showed you in the presentation again is what the directors submitted to myself, and then the ink-up and the changes that are recommended in the final project that came to you in your packet tonight.
And so in order to get the, the rest of this money, they have to be more self-sufficient and, and reach out and get donations and that kind of thing?
That's the, that's the, the kind of the concept is there's going to be partnerships in trying to meet the CIP needs.
Okay, excuse my ignorance, I just, I needed clear my.
Well, it's.
One on, because.
It's tough. There's a big document, and on top of that, like I said, I'm also trying to show you how we arrived at that document by showing your previous version of that document and changes that were made.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, Director, I didn't mean to call you heat like that, but I talk a lot.
Kathy, you had a question?
A couple of things. Just a note, both with CIP for library and the P. I doubt very much it's going to be twenty-six, but future considerations, first with the library, might be determined with the developers.
Yes, and, and during building acquisition.
Make significant changes to the library.
At the present, we're still working with our partnership group, and we're anticipating that that building.
I'm just looking at the five-year that, that could change. And also with the PD, the project with the, the grant with the county for possible.
Yes, we are working with a, a study on that.
If that comes up, that could, in the next five years, affect CIP for, I'm just.
Definitely, definitely.
Raising that, that, those two things kind of jumped at me.
Yes.
The, a couple of questions to Bob. The basketball court. I'm questioning that with respect to the need for some capital improvements in City Park, specifically the gazebo. The gazebo's in tough shape. I mean, it needs work. So is there a consideration in the operations for maintenance for that? Or is that, are we not looking at that because there's some electric? And, and City Park is used very heavily, and I would like to see something for City Park specifically with the gazebo.
Sure, Kathy, the basketball court, though, the funding for the basketball court is coming from a fund that is specific to Legion and Smith. So that would have nothing to do with the gazebo.
I was not aware of that.
Yeah. As far as the gazebo, though, there is some, you know, like the electrical, it is in our CIP wish list for City Park CIP. So those quotes that we got for improving that electrical, that box that's, you know, it's in, it needs to be moved up, and, yeah, I got a quote on that, and it's very expensive, of course, but, but that will be in our discussion with our, with our CIP for City Park itself. Clint, please correct me if I'm wrong.
I think we plan on having that discussion yet next week, Wednesday, with our improvements that we're doing, and that is in context to the camera project, running conduit and fiber and doing some electrical work there to see if it all fits in there. I'm hoping that some of our partners, including building Platteville.
Okay, yes, all right. That's kind of where I was going with that. And then just a question about the inclusive playground. The, I, the. Equipment contingency is twelve-five.
That's for all the parks, right?
Yes.
That's for all the.
Oh, that's for all of the parks.
All of the parks, okay.
But specifically with the inclusive playground is, um, ICI working, I mean, are they doing any long-term raising for that?
I can't speak for ICI, obviously. They, they have lots of discussions about long-term, is my understanding, they have a fund. You know, part of the challenge is, you know, we, we don't get to see their funds, you know, it's not, it's not for the city's eyes. So for us to kind of plan, it's kind of across our fingers kind of thing. So, I mean, we have to have something in there just in case. Sometimes they don't have funds, but.
And I'm, I'm, I'm bringing that up because when they first, that idea first came to us, we, I asked some questions about future maintenance, and I think the pad, the base of that, I think this, I mean, originally was a hundred thousand dollars, life term of whatever, ten, twelve years. Where's the plan to replace that?
Right. That is correct.
Three hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, it's warranted for seven years so far. You know, the company's been very good. They have patched it. The patches look good. I mean, it does wear and tear, though. When you go watch and you check it, where the swings are and the feet are dragging, I mean, it is, it's heavily used, so, so, I mean, but we are in year three, four, you know, so, yep.
Raise.
All gonna come.
A little flag here because. Going to come a day.
Yes.
And then, I guess that's all I have, unless you want to specifically talk about the non-state grant.
One is for Howard, and not trying to pick on you, Howard, but it's just so I can understand things a little bit more. I know the parks has that contingency fund, like twelve-five for playground equipment that breaks. Where on this, or how does the Public Works streets pay for things that just come up that are completely unexpected but not as big as, say, Pine, Pine Street? So like a sinkhole, if a sinkhole were to appear and it's, you know.
We do what we can with our operational budgets, and then we work with administration and the city manager if it's beyond those sorts of things.
To like move monies?
Well, potentially to bring forward a budget amendment. The, the budget can be changed during the year with council approval as it takes two-thirds vote. So if it's, if it's large enough that it.
it's large enough that it can't be managed through the operating budget, then that would be how we would handle it.
Thanks.
Tony?
I was thinking about the, the $100,000 grant that you said is no longer gonna happen for the trip. Or is, where do you think we could put that money? Because I'm assuming you want to replace it with something, right?
That was an in and an out, we would have gotten 100,000 from the DNR as a reimbursement after we, after we did that, so if we're not gonna
Okay.
I think we, we keep that then down to like a $7,000 that'll go to help with small seal coating and patching.
Yes.
For the, the other grant that was the, the, the drop-off at the trailhead point, that one, our local match, we intended, intended to use some impact fees, which are specific in particular, and also working with some local folks like our snowmobile club, so we'll keep those on the shelves and potentially apply for them again or look for opportunities.
I, I was thinking of it as the 100,000 was going away and we could put it somewhere else, but I understand that.
Steve, do you have questions? I have one question, and that is, we're closing a TIF this year. It's my understanding we're going to form a new TIF as early as possible in 2026.
But we have to perform it before a date in September, there's a date in September. When we do form that in 2026, any increment in that year would be applied towards?
I'm not worried about the increment, I'm worried about who, where have we allocated money to form a TIF? I mean, I know that, well, I don't know if it was MSA or Van DeWiel or whoever helped us with the other TIF stuff, and that, there's an expense to that.
Yes.
So my question is, where are we, I mean, since this is an important aspect of what we're going to do, where do we find that money?
It's a great question. So typically, how we've handled that is, when we did this with TIF 9, when that was created, is, that is an eligible TIF expense, the cost of creating the TIF, but of course, we have to spend the money before we create the TIF, so we spend the money out of the general fund, but then once the TIF is created, we transfer that cost to the TIF. Now, the downside is at that point, the TIF doesn't have any revenue coming in, so it's a little bit, do I dare say this out loud, a bit of a shell game in that you, you, you put the expense in the TIF with the anticipation that ultimately there'll be revenue enough to cover it, but in the short term, the general fund has to cover that deficit that you just created by moving expenses. We don't have to borrow, but
I mean, you have to borrow from the general
General fund for a few years until the anticipated revenue starts to flow, at which point the general fund is paid back for those costs.
And so will we see TIF budgets? Yes. Okay, and so we'll see a new TIF, what'll be 10? Or 11?
I don't know if we'd have that to prove yet, and a 2026, that would be put together in the year 2026. In regards to a new TID 2 in our general fund, we do have the, a bit of a cushion there with the funds yet that we, we visualize coming from the sale of the Roundtree Apartments that we plan on kind of applying towards housing. As part of discussions that we plan on bringing through Plan Commission in the series in the next few months, we also plan on talking about a proposal of what that budgeted amount using those funds, where they all fit into the conversation as well.
So, did you just tell me we won't have another new TIF until 2027?
We'd have it in place, but I don't, we don't
We can create a budget page for that, it would just show that we had estimated creation costs of, you know, let's say, I don't know, 20 grand, and then we would have, and then we would have a budget deficit of 20 grand, and that would be the only thing on the paper.
And would we have a, I mean, I would also like to see a timeline for that TIF, when we're gonna do, when we're gonna move on things. So we, I mean, you know, when are we gonna develop the paperwork, when are we gonna develop the parameters, when are we gonna develop this stuff? Because I don't want to get to November of next year and have not done this.
Understood.
I would defer that to the city manager. That's my only question, is the TIF and the budget. Any other questions? The non-state grant.
I have a question, is, does anybody know if, is, is it restricted to a municipality? I mean, you asked if we're competing.
My brain goes towards last year, where I think Southwest Health also put in for this grant. I think nonprofits are eligible to also put in.
You might have put in, I mean, there were a lot of grant applications, I, I, what did, did it say?
It was a pile, yeah.
It was, yeah, they, they delayed the, because, I mean, I think almost every library in Southwest Wisconsin put in, you know, it was
Last year, there was no even local matches, it was kind of free lottery tickets, if you will, where, why not ask? But obviously, this year, they're kind of changing that because there was such a high demand where they want then a 50% local match, and then they're also looking then for ensuring that there's, that those funds are going to be used in continuation for the projects that you're saying you're using them for.
If we look at doing that, I mean, I, I guess, yeah, yeah, our concern about attracting other organizations and our partners in the community city. And I, I think we should, we, we should apply, it's a, it's a matching, 50% total cost must be covered by non-state revenue, and we talked about the, elaborate on the idea of the heated garage for the park department? As far as the other half of the money that it wouldn't
Bob, do you mind talking on if that was a project that was selected, if there's opportunity for other money sources to cover a local match, and what that total project cost would be?
Yeah, we have, if we did most of the work ourselves, we put in at about 95,000 for a 40 by 60, would give us a heated shop, and I kind of, we, on the tour where that area would be, I think it'd work out pretty well. The matching funds, that would be, you know, a challenge we'd have to go through and decide what trusts would qualify, and if we could do some of the impact fees, because, you know, we're not getting now our, our trailhead, and so I guess that'd be a, kind of an ongoing discussion on that. There is some, you know, every year, we have $10,000 in, in outlay, so there are some sources we could get some funds for, but I think that would be a really good fit for this.
I, I agree, I think I would favor the parks heated garage, I think during our, our tour, we saw the space that you have, and, and I really do like the thought of keeping all of the park stuff on the north side of town, right where the parks are, where the majority of the parks are. I mean, I, I think that that would be very, so Steve, right behind the swimming pool is where there are parks, have you taken a tour? Yeah, and, and there's space there that there could be a heated garage put there, and I think that then, you know, you've got Smith Park, you've got the swimming pool, you've got the pickleball courts, you've got the broski, you've got all the baseball fields, I mean, they're all in a line right there, and then if you jump across the highway, then it's by Prairie View, by the soccer field, so, you know, I know that there's other things that you mow and take care of, but it seems to me like you keep all your stuff together there, and that would be a, a tremendous thing for your group.
Yeah, the employees would really appreciate that, you know, just be much more productive too, and it's all right there, that would be great.
Responsibilities, we would put it together with the city, we would probably reach out to Andy, Angie Wright, and she helped us last year put together a product.
I say go, I say go for it, because
I do too.
Because who knows who's gonna submit what projects, and who knows who's, you know, but if you, if you don't try, if you don't submit anything, you know you're not gonna get anything.
That is a
Pretty sure.
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed, they're not gonna show up and say, how can we?
They're not gonna show up and say, hey, listen, we know you didn't apply, but we have money for you. I don't think that's gonna happen.
We can, again, there's no limitations on it, it's just I don't know the flavor from Department of Administration on if it's, do they want a portfolio from a community to kind of pick, or do they want a community to prioritize and say, we really want this one? I don't know how those things work, but we can, there's no limitation on how many that we were to put in from not only a community, but also as a, as a government entity.
I was just looking at the library and the museum because we're kind of cutting funding in a way, I mean, not to be negative about it, but we are kind of cutting their funding.
And examples too, is working with those partners, is that we certainly have partner organizations that support those entities and helping them put, their implication for them directly, working with them, that could be another opportunity as well.
They do have to be capital infrastructure projects, though.
They do.
It has to be an infra, yeah.
Yeah, and for public.
Yeah.
Bob, I had a question about that heated garage, or no, the heated building.
Yes.
If that were to come to fruition, would you still use that other building, that one section, and, and keep that also, or are you talking about using this instead?
No, absolutely, would you, we're so limited in space that that would be great, we could convert more, one to an actual heated shop with all our, you know, tools and, and then one could be more kind of an office area or kind of meeting room, the pool area would fit for storage and all that. And, you know, as far as this grant, because, you know, that is a property, we could give them a 20-year guarantee that it'll be forever, you know, owned by them, I think it'd probably fit well, but I don't know, Angie probably had more insight than I would, for sure.
Okay, we will, by consensus, we'll kind of march forward with that. Is there any other discussion, Madam President, that you had for staff this evening in regards to CIP?
Anybody else, any questions, any comments, any suggestions, any concerns? When we present this, we will present the fire equipment separate from the rest of the capital budget, in case we have people who are watching that know that our limitation is generally what we're paying off in principle, in terms of the new borrow. In other words, instead of saying we're borrowing 2.3 million, we'll say we're, we'll say we're borrowing 1.3 million for roads or whatever, and then 1.1 million for a fire and, uh, fire engine, I guess it's an engine.
Can help to make sure that we define that so that everybody understands the, the concepts and then the increase. Madam President?
And I think if no one has any additional questions?
Then I I'd like to make a comment, though, this process for the administration and staff is phenomenal. Thank you all for putting it together, and I realize, I wish, I wish we could give everybody everything they wanted, but this is, I mean, thank you very much for putting together what, what, what we asked for.
Thank you, it is a process that takes a lot of hours and a lot of catching, as you saw, there's things to tidy up yet, and decisions yet that'll still kind of funnel through as we get operations.
Yep, because then, next, you know, we have the operations budget, so this was only for capital expenditures, capital, so next we'll go through the reg, some people might call it the regular, the regular budget or whatever, okay, all right. Yep, a lot of work, and we do have a lot of needs in the city, so I guess we're ready for the motion that sends us home.
That we adjourn.
A second. Okay, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Lynn to adjourn. I guess, Colette, we'll have to have you call the roll. Perrin?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Kelly, whoops, Cobb?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Ocean Gories.